This is the public meeting on the issue of reemployment of Beth Coleman, the Director of Preschool and Special Services Coordinator. And this is the schedule for handling the retirement, rehirement of Beth Coleman. On January 22nd, 2024, the Ravenna Board of Education passed a motion authorizing the Treasurer to provide public notice of a public meeting on the proposed retirement and reemployment of the Preschool Director, Coordinator of Special Education, Beth Coleman. In the same motion, the Board named myself, Candy Lukop, the Treasurer, as the Hearing Officer. This meeting notice went to the Record Courier no later than January 25th, 2024, and a copy of that notice is attached. On February 26th, that's today, 2024, the Ravenna Board of Education is holding a special public meeting, run and organized by the appointed Hearing Officer, myself, at Ravenna High School prior to the regular Board meeting at 6:00 PM. The agenda is attached, and all Board members should have received that prior to this meeting. Beth Coleman submitted her resignation effective July 1st, 2024. On April 22nd, 2024, the Ravenna Board of Education, at its regularly scheduled meeting, will accept Beth Coleman's retirement, resignation, and rehire. Beth Coleman is the Director of Preschool/ Coordinator of Special Education effective September 1st, 2024. That must be 60 days after the notice period for public meeting notice on January 25th, 2024. The Board shall notify the SCRS Board of the reemployment no later than the end of the month in which the reemployment commences. So that's the legal information that we are required to provide, and there's an opportunity for public input. Hearing none, I believe we can adjourn the meeting.
I have motion to adjourn, please.
She'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to call to order this meeting for Ravenna School District, Board of Education, February 26th, 2024, business meeting at 5:30 PM at Ravenna High School. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Here.
Mrs. Dennison?
Here.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Also like to introduce our two Student Board members, Angelina Fuller and Julius Maddox. And they are not here. That's okay. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance next, please. If I could have a moment of silence, please? Additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
If I could have approval of the agenda?
She'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
At this time, I don't believe we have any recognition of the public for agenda items.
Next, move out of the Game Changer Awards.
Okay, my favorite, absolute favorite time of the night. All right, if I could have all of the Game Changer winners to move over to that step over there where Mr. Ribeau is waving his papers. The adults will go first, followed by the kids, in order of preschool on up. And if the Board could go to the stage. Go ahead over, honey. Go cut right across. Cut right across, you're good.
Come on. You're doing good.
Okay. Neither Board member in the month showed up. It was too...
I know.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and start with our adult Board members, which is a staff member that was nominated by his colleagues, Mr. Harley Hall, art teacher at Ravenna High School. As he... Yeah. He'll get all embarrassed as I read it, but that's just how it goes. Mr. Hall is hands down one of the most popular teachers in the school. His quiet and humble nature keep him under the radar, but he no doubt deserves recognition for the art empire he has built here at Ravenna High School. Our art classes have always had the most student requests, with most students simply wanting to take the class because Mr. Hall teaches it. This has a lot to do with the peaceful environment he creates in his classroom and the thoughtful projects he chooses for his students. He works well with every student, from our top artists to our students with the toughest behaviors. Our students with multiple disabilities always have a home in his class. Most importantly, he puts out and inspires amazing young artists. Our students win countless awards each year at art shows and competitions through his artistic leadership, and his float wins top prize at the balloon affair every year. Ravenna High School is lucky to have him, and he deserves this recognition, even though he doesn't want it, because he's a little bit embarrassed. Congratulations. Thank you. Our other adult game changer is Mr. Gary Smith, the custodian at Brown Middle School, but unfortunately, he could not make it tonight, but he said to thank everybody for the award. And he is awesome. Okay, we're going to start with preschool. Coming to the stage is Scarlett Nickel. We love that hair. All right. Okay. Scarlett is a very kind... is very kind and helpful to her peers and to the adults. She always notices things that people may need and makes an offer to help. She's always willing to include her friends in what she's playing, no matter what. Congratulations, Scarlett, you're a true game changer. Next, from West Park, we have Elijah Hamilton. West Park is kindergarten. Elijah Hamilton is in Mrs. Kaiser's kindergarten class. Elijah has been such a wonderful addition to the school. He is always kind and such a good friend to others. He is a great Raven Way kid. He's a wonderful role model for other students, showing them how to be respectful, responsible, and in control. He always comes to school, ready to learn, and with a smile... let's see that smile. There you go, with a smile on his face. He continues to make great strides throughout the year. Keep up the good work, and congratulations, Elijah. He's coming, buddy. Next, from Willard, in Grade Two, is Eli Holsapple. Eli... Yep. Eli is an excellent student and role model to all when it comes to working hard, completing assignments and homework on time, listening and following all the school and classroom rules. He is well-mannered, polite, and very helpful to others in and out of the classroom. Eli shows these quality skills each and every day at school. You are a true example of a Ravenna game changer. Congratulations, Eli. And next, coming from West Main Elementary in Third Grade, in Mrs. Gibson's class... I spent the day with you, didn't I? Yeah. Is Lillian Jewell. Lillian comes in every morning, ready to learn by being prepared and in control. She is a kind friend to all. She goes above and beyond when doing her schoolwork. She is always willing to help a classmate, knows the classroom and building rules and expectations, and does all of that with a huge smile on her face. She is respectful, responsible, and in control, and she's a true game changer. Congratulations, Lillian. And now, from Brown Middle School, we have Jocelyn Hawkins, a Seventh Grader. Jocelyn is a hard-working, conscientious student who always tries her very best. She always has a smile on her face and is kind to all of her peers. She can be counted on to do what's right, even when no one is looking. She is the epitome of what it means to be respectful, responsible, and in control. Congratulations, Jocelyn. And now, from Ravenna High School, we have Hayden Hanzo. He has been nominated by his culinary teacher, Ms. Mazel. Hayden goes above and beyond to help keep our kitchens clean in cooking class. He has volunteered multiple times to fold towers, towels, scour sinks, sweep floors, and clean up other messes left by other students, either due to lack of detail or time constraints. He has been a delight to have in class, an absolute gem. He is so kind and polite. In addition, Hayden helps daily with the cleanup of our commons area after his lunch period ends. He steps in each day without being asked to assist the custodians as they start the cleanup process following his lunch period. We are so lucky to have Hayden as a Ravenna Raven. Congratulations, Hayden. Let's have one final big round of applause for all of our game changers. And if you could all meet me out in the commons, we're going to take pictures of our game changers with the Board. And then we'll come back and finish up the meeting. Thank you.
We're going to start back now with the Treasurer's update.
Thank you. First, though, I do want to share a couple of photos on the cover of my update tonight, because I was able to attend Shadow Student Day this year on February 8th, and I shadowed the preschool students. So thank you, Mrs. Coleman, for including me in the preschool on February 8th, and I had a great day. Next, though, I'd like to share with you some information regarding the property tax levy rates that have been certified by the County Budget Commission and that are on the agenda tonight for Board's approval. This is something that you see every year annually in February. It follows the tax budget that we do in January, but I wanted to give you some additional information about that this evening. I copied and pasted in the first slide there the section from the 24-25 tax estimates. This shows the Ravenna School District's total valuation, broken down by category. So residential and agricultural is $284,000... or $284,111,900 total valuation. The all other effective millage, those are public utilities and commercial property valuations. So you see those numbers as well, broken out as $83,778,190 and $23,611,570,000. So our total valuation for the 24-25 tax estimates is that $391,501,660. And this is not the first time the Board of Education has seen that amount. The county also certified that number when we submitted the resolutions for our emergency levy that'll be on the March 19th ballot. But I wanted to provide a little bit more information about that valuation, because I wanted to compare it to previous years. So the last time the district asked for new operating money was back in 2005, when we passed our previous operating levy of 6.5 mils. And at that time, the district's valuation was $353,787,119. So in the years following the previous new operating revenues that we've received, the valuation... the total valuation for all district properties has gone up about 10.7%. However, as we've discussed in the past, House Bill 920 that was passed during the 1970s as a method to prevent inflation from causing taxpayers to pay increased property taxes on their properties as they increased, House Bill 920 has kept our revenue stream fairly consistent. And that's some of the additional information that I want to provide tonight. The next slide shows you a five-year forecast, because I wanted to compare it to today's or the current fiscal years. This is actually the district's five-year forecast from 2008 that was approved in May of 2008. And it shows you the actual previous years of 2005, 2006, and 2007. I felt like I was in a time warp when I was looking at it, because if you look at our total revenue on line 2.080, for 2005, we received $25.1 million. For 2006, we received $26.7 million. And for 2007, we received $29.1 million. Remember those numbers? Because on the next slide, you see our current forecast that we passed in October. The district's revenues for 2021, 22, and 23 are $30.5 million, $26.7 million, and $27.8 million. So basically, the district has been operating with the same amount of revenue overall in all of that time. So going back to 2005, we had about $25 million. We're only up to $30 million in 2021. And then the state funding formula changed a little bit, and they took out the open enrollment revenue. So our total revenue last year was $27.8 million, which, if you, again, look back at 2006 and 2007, you'll see that's fairly consistent. So just wanted to point out how the district's revenue works, especially from property taxes. That number maintains a consistent amount regardless of the valuation in the district. So the next slide is a little bit hard to read on the slides, but each Board member was provided a printed copy, and it shows you the last 14 years of property tax revenue. So I just pulled that out of the forecasts, lines 1.01, 1.02, and 1.05. Those are the three numbers that add up to the property tax revenue number that the county applies to that valuation that you're approving tonight, that certified amount that you're approving tonight. So that total property tax revenue amount, going back to 2010, was $13.3 million. And then you can follow along in 11, 12, 13, 14, and so forth. And you'll see it has remained fairly consistent of around $13 to $12 million. Last year, in 2023, we actually collected $11.9 million in property tax revenues. And again, in comparison to that total valuation number that the district collects on, I put that number down there, too, and tracked that for the previous 10 years with a percent increase and decrease. So you can see how property taxes, overall, total valuation for the district has increased or at some points decreased. And even if I look back further, if you recall some of the corrections in the housing market in 2008, 2009, you would see negatives in those years as well. But I started this at 2010 and kind of went from there. But you'll see in 2013 and 2014, we had some decreases in the total valuation. It looks like those were corrected recently in 2013. And then 2024 is a property reappraisal year. So the district will have a property tax... property value reappraisal year this year, and taxpayers can expect to see their properties are worth more. However, again, the Portage County Auditor will make the correction based on the rules in House Bill 920 to correct the millage. The millage will be reduced. We'll continue to collect the same amount of money. So I did want to share some of that trend information with you. And again, showing you the impact of new local revenue in our current forecast for 2024 through 2028. That's the $2.7 million emergency levy. We'd collect $2.7 million per year for five years. That's the definition of an emergency levy. It can be used for emergency operating expenses in our general fund. The fact that it collects $2.7 million a year total means that even as property values increase in Ravenna and Ravenna Township, that the millage would be adjusted to continue to collect only that $2.7 million each year. We would get a first collection in 2025, fiscal 2025, and a full collection going forward in '26, '27, '28. This slide from our five-year forecast is not new. The Board of Education saw it when we approved the resolutions to put the levy on the ballot. However, I just wanted to point out that it is enough money to balance our budgets in '25, '26, '27. Going forward from there, we would have to continue to be fiscally responsible, manage our expenditures, and make cuts where necessary to keep that revenue stream and budget in balance. So I hope this information is helpful and considers why the district is asking for new operating money at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Superintendent update.
And I will cede my time to our Building Spotlight, Willard Elementary, and our Department Spotlight, Special Services. If we could start with Mr. Kuzier in Willard. Nope.
All right. Well, thank you, first off, for giving me the chance to talk to everybody. I like doing this once a year. Slightly nerve-wracking, I don't know why, but it's, you know, it's one of those things we do and we like doing, because it's sharing something that's good, something that's exciting that's happening. And this year, I felt like kind of showcasing a group of teachers in our building that make an impact, and that's kind of what the title of this is. Rick, my slideshow looks weird, I'm sorry, you're cut off there. But it says, "What's your favorite subject?" And there's a question mark behind there, the picture got a little enlarged. It's not a question we're really asked. It's not a question we're really asked to answer much unless we're a kid. I mean, you guys pop into our schools, usually talk to the kids, say, "What's your favorite subject?" They have an answer for you every time. And we all did at some point in our lives, and we look back and we think, if you asked me at one point, I would have said it was art when Mrs. Medunia would roll her cart down to my room. That was the best part of my day. It wasn't math by any means. It was when Mr. Garrison had gym class in fifth grade, and that was my favorite part of the day. It wasn't when Mrs. Taylor taught me history or social studies in fifth grade. I hated that class. High school, if I go back to high school, I think of being in Mr. B.'s Advanced Woods, Advanced Metals class. Those were my favorite subjects of high school. Didn't like government. Sorry, it wasn't fun for me. But for kids, it's as common as asking them, "What's your favorite dinosaur?" I mean, we all had that at some point. So kids kind of know that right away. And when you ask them and you get into it, there's a lot of good reasons of, a lot of them don't pick the subjects that we put the most time into as administrators in buildings. It's not the ELAs, the maths, the sciences, the social studies, as much as those are what we're rated on and what our school's success is rated on. For us, a lot of them pick the arts, the musics, the PEs and that. So what we did was we kind of went through and we talked about some of the amazing things that they're doing in those classes. And I wanted to share some of those with you because I think they're really, really important for our kids, especially at the first and second grade level. Hey, you got it. Look at that. Let's talk about first off art class. You know, it's not just here's some crayons and color. Art experiences in K-4 are more powerful than any of us realize. They help with memory, feelings, and even they calm anxiety for some of our kids. We have some of our most, we'll say, high-energy, touchy kids will say that, you know, have a rough day every day, and you send them to art, that's the calmest part of their day or their week. Art classes help the students with problem-solving skills, decision-making, and can even help with social, emotional needs. Now, some of the fun facts, I know everybody here likes just numbers and getting right to it. There's 300 art lessons per month in K-4. That's 300 times. And I don't know about you, but for all these classes, think about nearly doing the same thing for an entire month 300 times or something similar. The one that gets me is the music teacher because I can't imagine hearing that first grade song over and over and over every day. From K-4, we have 769 students, give or take. They receive art instruction at least once or twice a week. And then the big thing with art, they push out to the community a lot of things that we see and almost take for granted. The district art shows, they're on display at the Reed Memorial Library, and even art on Main. So they're out there, and that's one of those things where there's just pieces of work left and right all over the community. So for our music class, I thought it was really interesting. It's not just stand here, sing, let's, let me play the piano for you like we all experienced. If you notice, I did not say music class was my favorite as a kid. I loved being in the band in middle school, and that was one of those ones that was super fun for me. But our students in first and second grade for sure, they're dancing, they're singing, they're playing with instruments, and they're just exploring music every day. And if you come to one of our performances, you see that in the shows. They're up there in first grade. It's organized chaos, the best way I can put it, and it's the best kind of thing because the kids love it. They love going to music class. They love exploring. And I put a picture of one of my favorite things at the bottom. If you've ever seen a boomwhacker before, there's these tubes and they have different sounds and they make music with them because one of the standards of first grade is they have to be able to, it says it right there, "Limited guidance, play a variety of classroom instruments alone with others and demonstrate proper technique." So think of a first grader playing an instrument alone. You can't give him like a violin and expect him to do it. But boomwhackers are a way to do that, and they have so many instruments in there they mess with. The other one with music, our family involvement with that has never been better, and that's a big thanks to Parents Square. There's something daily, if not every other day, put out there of what parents can see that's happening in the music classes just in real time almost. So a huge impact on their day for music, and they love it, which I'm kind of jealous of them because I did not like that at that age. The library. So we had some changes this year in library, and we came up with a new plan where our librarians are kind of going all over the place. We kind of lost some of our coverage and some of our staff for that, but we've made the best of it. In the first half of the year alone, in just kindergarten through second grade, we've checked out 5,690 books, which that blows my mind when I saw that number. And believe it or not, that's just half compared to last year. So the limited time has cut that in half. Mr. Petrosino, he's also taught 56 internet safety lessons, not something you'd expect to see in the library, but he's pushing that stuff out there and helping them get to know, hey, this is what you have to look out for. And as little as kindergarten and first grade, we have to do that for those kids. 216 library lessons, we like to call them. It's like nonfiction versus fiction, Chromebook care, and even library cards. And then finally, like I said, they are traveling a lot this year, going back and forth to buildings and managing multiple schedules. So a huge part of the day in library is like we'll call it a bonus special they have some days at Willard, but the kids love spending time with Mr. Petrosino. He's doing a great job for us. Now, I didn't go with the most obvious one first. You ask most kids, we'll say most first and second grade boys, they're going to say gym class, that's my favorite one. It's not what it used to be either. What's, I look at old Willard yearbooks, and there's like the pictures of the ropes hanging from the ceiling and that. We don't do that stuff anymore. But what they do now is a lot different. Believe it or not, our first and second graders, if you're ever interested and you want to see something that's very cool and also very nerve-wracking at the same time, they're actually riding bikes on our playground. Our PE teacher brought bikes with her when she came here. So you see like 20 bikes going in a circle. And there's kids almost every day that don't have a bike, and they learn how to ride a bike all in that same day. Like, I mean, we've, if you have kids, you've taught them how to ride bikes, and it's super scary. And I'm like, wait, how'd you do that so fast? She's just got a technique to do it. I thought this was kind of cool. In third and fourth grade, they're actually writing persuasive letters in gym class, promoting healthy physical lifestyles. And then the other cool one is with our amazing technology we have to those guys up there, they're up there doing like, you know, Dance Dance Revolution and all these games with big screens in the gym. So they're not just throwing balls at each other, they're actually doing coordinated dances and things like that, just interacting with that technology that we all know the kids love. And then I thought this was interesting. One of the PE standards, it focuses on self-respect and respecting others. So I don't know about you, but in my gym class, there was no respecting others. It was, it seemed like a free-for-all. They really have to focus in the gym class as far as like making sure the kids are being sportsmanlike and helping each other out. My last slide, I promise. The impact they make though is not just in the classroom. Our special staff, they're everywhere. If you come into our building, you're going to see them not just teaching, they're the ones that are helping us unload the cars. They're the ones that are opening ketchup packets at lunch. They are everywhere that we need them to be, even though we need them in the classroom the most. But they're the first ones that are there to help us where we have those holes in our day. And like I said, those classes are some of the favorites amongst our kids. The big thing here, they give our students and our staff a break. Our staff, that is their planning time when we send them to art class or gym class, but also too, that's a student break. I'm sorry, but as a kid, when we could start switching classes, I remember I loved doing that because, no offense to my fourth grade teacher, but I was just sick of hearing from her, going to gym class was a break for me. And then finally, they leave Willard for half the day, a little bit more than, less than half the day. We miss them. Like, we're looking for people to help out, and they're gone, and they're helping out Mr. Shrab at West Park. So we definitely miss them when they are not in our building helping us out. And I'd like to end with, I asked them for info to help me out with this presentation, and they sent me 42 slides of stuff. So with more to come, I'm taking their slides and their more detailed facts and things, and those are going to be all on our social media pages. So be prepared to check that out after all this. So that is what I have, and I was a lot, and I tried to get it in. What was my time? 35? Three, no. It was not 35 minutes. All right, well, thank you. That is all I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Specials are important to our kids, and we're doing a great job making sure they are well-rounded outside of just the core subjects. Next, we have Mrs. Jessica Haynes, who's going to shine a spotlight on special services. As you know, we have a 23% special education population compared to the statewide average of 13%. So Mrs. Haynes is busy. She wears her heart on her sleeve, and she loves her kids, so I'm excited to see what she has to present to you tonight.
I titled this slide Special Education and More because there's so much more to special services than just special ed. So we'll touch on that a little bit. But this is just a breakdown of what we offer here in Ravenna. So in special ed, you have what's called a continuum of services. And that is basically from the most restrictive environment to the least restrictive environment. And here we have every single type of setting that we offer, which I think is really telling. When I talk to other directors and other smaller districts, they do not have the choices that we have for their special ed population. So we do have our 10 MD units. That's primarily students with significant autism or multiple disabilities. We have our nine resource rooms. That's typically students who have an intellectual disability. We have our five behavior units, and then we have multiple co-taught settings in each of our buildings. We also offer the services there on the right-hand side, speech and language, OT, PT, BCBA services, which is behavior. We have mental health services with our district therapists. We also contract with Children's Advantage. And then case management through CA, hearing impaired and visually impaired. We are one of the only districts in the area to have a full caseload of hearing impaired students, which I find that very interesting. What we also do for special services, we are responsible for MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support, providing interventions to students who are struggling with academics, behavior, or attendance. We're also responsible for PBIS, our nursing services, 504 plans. We do a lot of professional development on a variety of topics, fundraising and outreach. I work a lot with Coleman and Children's Advantage, doing training for them on IEPs and ETRs so that they understand us, and then we can better understand what they're doing. Care coordination is basically, goes along with the parent mentor. So we qualified for a grant through Ohio State, a parent mentor grant, and that's a picture there of her, Jackie Ralph. Her son Emmett is at West Maine. And the neat thing about Jackie and her son is he has been in every continuum of services that the district has to offer, and now he's in full inclusion, which is really exciting. So for those of you that know Emmett, he's a joy. But Jackie has done a ton in getting our parents the support that they need in the community, connecting them with sports, connecting them with anything they need as far as IEP and ETR understanding. So this past August, we had our first Raven Athletes of Honor 5K. And so with that money, we have used some of that for field trips. So these are just some pictures of some of the field trips that we've taken. You have, we go to the Happy Day Pool. That's usually like monthly for our MD population. And they, that transportation piece is supported by that Athletes of Honor money. The picture in the far right-hand corner is the Great Lakes Science Center, and we just did that last week, and it was absolutely incredible to see our kids with the music and to see our kids with just all of the science, really exploring that in an opportunity they wouldn't typically have was incredible. The picture right below that is our middle school, MD units traveling to the Ravenna movies. And what was cool is they let us go without any other kids, any other people in the theater, and they turned the lights and sound quieter so that our kids with sensory issues weren't like afraid to be in the movies. I thought that was great. And then of course Tucker. No explanation needed with him. He's fantastic. And then here's some more fun stuff. So Chris Hepler, the picture on the far left, he was Santa for our MD classroom at the high school. Chris is like the ultimate Santa. He was also Santa for the Very Merry Dinner, which is the bottom photo with the Ben Curtis Foundation. And then of course, you have a ton of pictures from our dance, which is in May. And this dance is for all students in the county with disabilities, and it's, we cover 10 different school districts. So it's really, really cool, and we have over 200 kids. Last year, we did celebrating our superheroes, and our high school students dressed up and were just, it was incredible to see them with our students interacting with kids with disabilities, and they didn't bat an eyelash. They didn't think it was, you know, weird or scary. They embraced it wholeheartedly, and I just thought it was incredible. So this year's dance is May 10th, 2024, obviously at 11:30. Anyone who wants to come is welcome. It's just a really awesome day. And that is all paid for through grant and crowdfunding. So yeah, that's all I have if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. I am really proud of the work that all of our schools are doing, but today, Willard with his presentation about the specials, and Jessica with her presentations about special services, those are areas that we don't often talk about because we're consumed with our report card score, but those are areas that, you know, a lot of kids benefit from. So really proud of the work they're doing. Thank you.
Next up, we have reports of the board. First is Maplewood Report. Mrs. Seaman.
Okay. One of the things that was discussed at Maplewood Board Meeting was snow days. And that's always kind of a hassle because it cannot, it can't close until five schools have closed, and then Maplewood can also close. So snow days are always a problem out there. Not a problem that the superintendent enjoys at all. The cafeteria is going to be completely remodeled, and just to buy the hoods alone over the stoves is going to be over 200,000. They are talking about adding fire and EMT programs, and that would be fantastic if they can do that. The electrical program is going to be doing some electrical work at Waterloo, and that's a good project for the kids this year. Also, our December student, we had a December Student of the Month, and they only choose one student from each grade, one junior, one senior. And this year, both the December and January Students of the Month were from Ravenna. December was Samantha Weber in animal science, and the January student was Autumn Victor in animal science also. We had four, at the end of the semester, we had four people who had perfect attendance. They were John McDaniel, Corey Thompson, Daniel Whitick, and Samantha Weber. And we had several seniors and juniors on the honor roll. Seniors included Dean Baker, Dakota Bishop with a four-point, Ethan Burkholder with a four-point, Emma Cannon, Victoria Clemens with a four-point, Dylan Kennedy, Madison Cooley, Jackson Ritchie, Cameron Smith, Ava Spence, Cody Thompson, Autumn Victor, Samantha Weber, Daniel Whitick, and Madison Williams. And our juniors were Sierra Everhart, Travis Goodman-Smick, Jimmy Holmes with a four-point, John McDaniel with a four-point, Kennedy Miller, Luke Miller, Marquise Reimers, Matthew Rumhold, Hannah Steppich, and Victor Torrick. So we're pretty proud of those kids. They are all our Ravenna students, or not all, but those are honor roll students from Ravenna. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Dennison with reports for the Parks and Rec.
Marlene Watts Memorial Pot of Gold Poker Run and Walk. That same day, you can register as well from 7:15 to 8:15. The event starts at 9:00. There will be an award ceremony at 10:30. And the history behind the Marlene Watts Memorial Event is connected to the Ravenna School District. She was an advocate for our youth, and she served as a secretary at Carlin Elementary School. All the proceeds from the event will go toward the Ravenna Parks and Recreation Youth Scholarship Fund, which will enable youth who aren't able to pay to participate in a lot of the events that the Parks and Recreation host. So if you're interested, please go on the website and register for a day of fun and a way to give back so that our kids can participate and be a part of Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dennison. Next, we have reports of the treasurer.
Thank you. This evening, you have a consent agenda for items one through eight. Item number one are the approval of the minutes from the January regular business meeting. Item number two, our gifts and donations is listed to the... Item number two, our gifts and donations is listed to the Ravenna High School and Ravenna, I'm sorry, West Park and the preschool. Item number three are the financial reports for the month of January, including the cash position report, the check register, the budget status report, and the bank reconciliation. Item number four is the approval of then-and-now payments. We have one this month to the Applewood Center. Item number five is the approval of the OSU Brown Middle School Master Gardener Grant for $499.22. It was awarded to Brown Middle School teachers. Item number six is the approval of an OSU Ravenna High School Master Gardener Grant in the amount of $488.78. Item number seven is the approval of the Portage County Retired Teachers Association Grant. I believe we had a presentation for that last month. Item number eight are the tax levy rates from the county auditor, and that completes the consent agenda items.
Have a motion?
Go ahead.
Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
And then item number nine is a standalone item, the approval of the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Deficit Reduction Plan. The district has worked with the Board Finance Committee to prepare this plan, and board members have been given a hard copy of that as well this evening.
Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Next, reports and recommendations of the superintendent and other administrators.
Yes, first we have one, I have two, a membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and that is a standalone agenda item.
Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Next, we have a consent agenda, items two, three, and four. We're asking you to approve the agreement between Stark Portage Area Consortium and the Ravenna School District for Internet Services. We're asking that you approve a bus bid participation recommendation to bid on buses, and a MOU with Stark State College so that we can offer the CCP program.
Motion, please.
Still moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Next, we are asking that you approve an overnight field trip. Mr. Wanderly is in the audience if you have any specific questions, but his civics class is going to visit the Holocaust Underground Railroad Museum in Cincinnati.
Have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Next, we are asking, this is a standalone as well, number six, that you approve a payment in lieu of transportation agreement.
Motion, please.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Next, we have some personnel considerations. Under letter A, I'm asking for a consent agenda for number one and number two. One is to approve the movement on the pay scale due to earning college credit for two of our teachers, and two is to employ additional substitute teachers as needed.
Motion, please.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Next is a consent agenda for number one under Part B and number one under Part C, which is asking for the approval of athletic worker, athletic coaches, or supplemental contracts for the spring, as well as volunteers for the spring as also.
Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, can I hear the motion again?
It's Joanne.
Joanne?
Mike seconded.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Next is a standalone, I'm asking that you approve the employment recommendation for a new educational aide at West Maine, Isaiah Calhoun.
Have a motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
That's D.
Next, we are asking that you accept the resignation of an educational aide at West Maine, Natalie Rogers. We're also asking, this is a consent agenda, three through 10, resignations of educational aides, employment of educational aides, unpaid leave of absences for three employees. Under the contract, they are allowed to apply for and receive one unpaid absence. The employment of a custodian, the resignation of a custodian, and the employment of substitute employees that are classified in nature.
Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Finally, we have a standalone, we have, are asking you approve the employment of our new payroll clerk, Joyce Schuyler.
Have a motion, please.
Still moved.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Finally, we have the recognition of public. We did originally have to, but I believe they have elected not to speak. Am I correct? So, we have no recognition of the public for non-agenda items, and we also have no student board members with which to speak.
Information?
The informational items are, the end of the nine weeks is Friday, March 15th. Next board meeting is Monday, March 25th. Spring begins on Friday, March, or spring break begins with the Good Friday Holiday on Friday, March 29th. Spring break runs through the first through the fifth, and then, as has been put into the newsletter, we will have April 8th as a calamity day because of the eclipse, along with every other school district in the nation, I think, or at least in Northeast Ohio. So, it's really going to run from the 29th through the 8th that Monday. And then, we do have a need for an executive session. It is a private session of the board, Control Bud Sunshine Law, and can only be used for special purposes outlined in law. In this case, it will be for an employment issue. So, we need to motion in.
Motion to enter into executive session?
Still moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Wizniewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennison?
Yes.
Mr. Tantamonia?
Yes.[1106.83]